Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting in order. This will be our regular session of the Mayor and Council, City of Bisbee County, Coach Cheese, State of Arizona. We'll do it on Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven P. M. Our council chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Pete Skinner.
Present.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sweet.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Stephen Pocken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Matthew Gurney, public works director, Jay Ritchie, deputy police chief, Jim Richardson, fire chief, Mike Norman, construction project manager, Melissa Hartman, planner, Jo Estes, city attorney.
Well, thank you, everyone. Maybe on the internet and all those that are here. But tonight we'll have a moment of reflection. I'll stand and then the last I'll ask you.
I think that the meeting is to provide a looking at the states of America, to the Republic from which they stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
I had no projections tonight, no real announcements, except that if you have a moment, those can apply to City Hall. That actually looks like a real building now and and soon we'll have a copper roof on soon as the plumbers get to go through the holes in the in the ceiling. And they'll put that on. So things are coming along nicely. Appreciate everybody's support on that. Uh, we have nothing signed up for call to public, so we'll move directly into general business. So first order of general business will be accounts payable motion.
A little bit with the accounts payable on the amount of seven hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. Seconds?
And motion second. Questions on accounts payable?
Page one.
Go ahead.
Uh, on page eleven, I just did not know why it's in this account. Maintenance and management for operation management, seventy-three thousand, one ninety-seven. Under contract services.
The seventy-three thousand?
Uh-huh.
That is the the payments in Jacob's.
The payments in Jacob's.
Okay, I just didn't see Jacob. I didn't see.
Yeah.
The first one on this one. Okay, that's that's good.
What else? Yeah, go ahead.
On page seven, uh, under operational expenses for the swimming pool. Just curious, uh, they have internet out there and what's it towards?
Yes, with the new, um, pumping software that we, a system that we have out there. It has, um, a deal that connects to the internet, so we can adjust, uh, flooring levels and different levels, you know, depending where we are.
Okay.
Monitor. Well, not me, but our process.
I know he just like piggyback off the county, but. Okay, I had a question. All right, now the motion of a second, the payment account payable on out of seven hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. All those in favor, somebody might be saying aye.
Aye.
Close name. And I just have it, so move. Moving on now to the consent agenda. We have three items tonight. First one is the approval of the minutes of our regular session for November fifth. Second one is an appointment to a planning zoning commission, and the third is the resignation uh, from the Bisbee Arts Commission. Do we have anybody to pull any? Seeing done. Motion for the for the consent agenda has shown.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular session of the mayor and council held on November twenty twenty-four at seven.
Second.
We need the mayor. Consent the entire consent.
Oh.
You want to re-motion?
Move to approve it as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second to approve consent agenda as shown, as listed. All those in favor, if they're saying aye. Close name. Very none, the eyes have it, so move. We'll move on to old business. We have, uh, three items tonight under old business. First one is discussion of possible approval of apartment facility and right away used for net for lower Vista Park for the thirty-fourth annual festival lights to be held on Friday, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Um, from eight P. M. Oh, I'm sorry, eight A. M. to ten P. M. Vendors will be set up around lower Vista. Uh, go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, so, unfortunately, it's coming to you asking, uh, permission, um, you have the festival of lights, um, in the lower Vista Park this year due to, uh, as we discussed previously, um, Commerce Street being closed and not being able to utilize that area. We looked at different options, um, uh, even grassy park and city park in both locations would need the road, uh, one, at least a road closed. And so we looked for this year to, uh, move to the lower Vista Park, believe me, does look like.
Questions?
Which road had we closed to use city park?
It's, um, Taylor, because we use that for the fire, fire department to, and they come and park in that area. Uh, and it's kind of been outgrowing that area, and that's why we moved to the first place too.
All right, I just had to say I am super sad to see this event about all this be. It brings foot traffic with merchants. It's really a boon that people, it's been in that part of town traditionally, and I am not happy about it being anymore.
Well, this hope is only this year. That's that's.
Yeah, that's the problem. Since that's what we had planned, just showing here, once we open up Commerce Street.
This problem is, is the traffic situation. We would have to go back or try to make people go down subway and then take people up over the cloison and and the thing would be closed, so, um, yeah.
I've also heard from, uh, people, you know, this is always old busy. Sad to see that. But nothing business.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's not that we don't want it there. Uh, it was, it was doing great. Better than this.
You really, I mean, if last month we looked at the Iron Man, but everything's on a slope, but it gets down to hop along and move anyway. And, uh, City Park was not conducive to all the vendors and so on, plus whatever else had to be set up. And it kind of drew everything away from downtown anyway, so it it was, it's just, what we're going to get through is part of the whole fire situation. Hopefully, this is the last of the the things we got to do.
Yeah.
Uh, for consequences of the fire, so. We've got a whole year to hopefully get everything back as somewhat normal. Any other comments or questions? I can entertain a motion for item three, if someone would like to.
I move to approve the parking and right where these permit for the use of lower Vista Park for the thirty-fourth annual festival of lights on Friday, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, from eight A. M. to ten P. M. Vendors will set up around lower Vista.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve item three to allow the festival of lights at the lower Vista Park, Vista Park on November twenty-ninth. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Very none, the eyes have it. So, yeah, thank you.
An exception, so we know.
Yeah.
Thanks. We'll be calling back to you guys for something.
Yeah.
So let's get through this one and and stick a heart or stick a into the heart of the Main Street fire. All right, onward, item four. This is the discussion of possible approval of ordinance O-24-20, pending the zoning code, Article Three, procedures, section three point five, architectural design for the historic preservation overlay district, subsection three point five point five, demolition and movement of historic buildings, adding a new subsection, three point five point five D, penalty for demolition without permit in the historic industry and providing for repeal and conflicting ordinances. Uh, this is what we went over last, um, two weeks ago. And go ahead, uh, uh, and present what we have. I'll hear.
I was just here to see if you guys have any more questions on this one.
Let's discuss the last. All right, somebody wants to read this one, and I'll let them go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance zero dash twenty-four dash twenty, amended the zoning code, Article Three, for signature section three point five, architectural design review for historic preservation overlay district, subsection three point five point five, demolition, movement of historic buildings, adding a new subsection, three point five point five, penalty for demolition without permit in the historic district, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances and providing for severability and providing for penalties.
My second.
We have a motion, a second to approve item four, which is ordinance O-24-20. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Skinner.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Bud.
Aye. Can pass it unanimously, so move. And we also have a second reading. This will be discussion of possible approval ordinance O-24-21. This is a manual zoning code, Article Three, procedures, section three point five, architectural design review for historic preservation overlay district, subsection three point five point two, review requirements and procedures relating to review requirements, extensions and fees, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances and providing for severability. Go ahead, you're there to answer questions.
Yep, thank you, Mayor Council, for having us, uh, for this other one, too. If you have any questions, please.
My second order, or second reading, I'm sorry. Questions? All right, who wants to read this one?
I approve, approve ordinance O-24-21, amending the zoning code, Article Three, procedures, section three point five, architectural design review for the historic district preservation overlay district, subsection three point five point two, review requirements and procedures relating to review requirements, extension and fees, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances and providing for severability.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve the final rating of ordinance O-24-21, amending the zoning codes. Uh, need any roll call?
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Skinner.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Bud.
Hi. Can pass it unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you. Here. All right. This will move us on now to new business. New business is item six. First order is presentation. Uh, regarding our dark sky community, I want to let, uh, city manager Pocken take over on this one and introduce the wonderful person that's put tons of work behind this, so.
Um, I think everybody, uh, in the room is aware that we've been working on a designation as a uh, excuse me, international dark sky community. Um, and, uh, I'm, I'm going to, uh, assume that most of you have also become acquainted with Bruce, uh, Cyrep, over those years, that he's been working, uh, with a large number of people, uh, on it. And so I'm not going to steal any of his thunder. I'm going to introduce him and let him make his best question.
Come on up.
Okay, well, as almost everybody in this room knows, I started, uh, the Dark Skies Nation here in Bisbee six years ago. And, uh, at first I was thinking that, uh, I was going to get a lot of resistance and everything. And I started bringing my case to a lot of different people on the council and, uh, started winding its way through our local government. And I was constantly surprised when it, let's see, we had, uh, go first before the planning commission and explain what was going on with the planning commission, and when it came up for a vote, it passed unanimously. Okay, and then, uh, had to come before the city council. And we had a, uh, to make sure everybody was up to speed on things, we had a work session lasting hour and a half, two hours, so everybody could understand the new ordinances that we were voting. When it came up to a vote, it passed unanimously from this body. And, uh, in terms of trying to get certified by the international dark skies community, that was a huge thing. This was a fought over here. Everybody in the city said, yes, this is a good thing to visit. And so, um, uh, we finally achieved that just here at the end of October. And, um, today we had our major press release. We've gone on three different, uh, major websites. There's the international dark skies community. Um, they have an international website. We could be seeing more international visitors coming to Bisbee. And, um, the Arizona Office of Tourism heard about this. They were getting ready to do a story on dark skies in Arizona. This is getting to be a popular thing. And all of a sudden Bisbee popped up, and we're going to be the poster child on the Arizona Office of Tourism for the dark skies story. So, um, things are starting to roll, and, uh, we should start seeing some results from this. So first of all, I want to do, uh, award the city of Bisbee.
Okay.
So Jeff, you can, I'll come around. Jeff, that, um, I hope ends up hanging in the brand new city hall on what we've achieved here, because this was a six-year journey of making this happen.
You're, you're, you're going to give him a little minute? Let me just proudly say how much work he's put into this. I mean, Bruce, this has been a, uh, a forever long-term dogfight, and, uh, and he's like a man on a bone, and I think you finally got your reward of the, of the bone, and that's, and this is great, and, uh, I just want to thank you and everybody else that's, uh, that's put all the time and effort into, to making this happen. Um, there's only, I believe, six other cities in Arizona. We're not the first, but we're the first in southern Arizona, so let's just go that way. Sedona and Flagstaff and some of them up there, heck with them. We're down here in the south, and we're going to do it our way. So anyway, thank you. That's right.
Okay, now, as we all talk about this, what is a dark sky community? What is this going to mean to Bisbee? Uh, officially, a dark sky community is a town or city that has shown exceptional dedication to the preservation of the night sky through the implementation and enforcement of quality lighting codes, dark skies education, and citizen support of dark skies. But Bisbee is so much more than that. The benefits of this designation come on a number of different levels. On one hand, on a dollars and cents level, it'll bring more tourists that will come to enjoy the charms of our century-old architecture, excellent restaurants, and lively music venues. But now we can add to that list the Milky Way and the wonderful stargazing on most nights of the year. But on a much more individual level, it is our personal connection to the universe. A quality of life issues that so many other communities have let slip away in the forward march of progress. Here in Bisbee, we have found a way forward that allows us to embrace the future while keeping what we have. Thank you very much for making this happen. Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Um, uh, we had a little gathering this afternoon, and, uh, uh, Bruce was kind enough to bring in, uh, about twenty or twenty-five people who, who has actually been working with for at least many years, uh, on what, quite frankly, is much heavier lifting, uh, than I ever knew it was. Um, that, as, as many of you already know, um, uh, this is a project that is very personal, uh, to me, because, um, uh, you know, uh, my, my hobby, uh, astronomy, many of you have seen it. Some of the images that we collectively gathered, um, from anywhere up to, uh, ninety million light-years away from Earth, I've been able to process them, put on the internet for people's enjoyment. That only happens in places like this. I had a similar experience when I worked in Winslow, because we had a state park right outside the city limits. That was a really great dark sky area. And I remember, uh, we, we started, our librarian actually started on the, uh, uh, star parties, and we held them in the parking lot at the, uh, at the State Park Lodge, and, uh, uh, as the numbers grew, we realized that there was a lot more interest in the night sky than what we had first imagined. And, um, was one occasion where, uh, a group from, uh, northern Arizona, but not in the Winslow area, came, uh, because they, uh, we had the only star party for miles. And, uh, these kids get off the bus. These are, these are kids. These are elementary school kids, okay? And they get off the bus, and they look up. Just amazing. When a kid says, I'm seeing the Milky Way for the very first time. And they don't live in large cities. They don't live in metropolises. They're not from Cleveland. They're from other cities that are small, medium-sized communities that haven't taken the care to allow us to view, uh, the creation of, of the night sky, the universe. And so, excuse me, uh, and so just as I got what, when I was in elementary school, um, and, uh, well, these many years, it's the only difference between then and now is the cost of the gear I use. Um, but it's, it's what this is to us, what this is to me, what this is to, uh, pie and sky, okay? Uh, which they do one Thursday evening every month over at the science lab. Um, this is, this is, this is our key to the next step, okay? We're not, this isn't, this isn't the end. This is the beginning. Okay? Um, when we were able to get the designation of, of, um, um, we got at Camp Nakco for being endangered, uh, historic site. That was the catalyst that made things happen. Okay? Um, perhaps this is the catalyst that can make some other things happen in our community, because we have, we have interest, we have community assets. Um, uh, you know, I can tell you from personal experience that building a observatory from scratch is, is a heavy lift, but, um, there are people, uh, that can help us to do that. Um, but the last time I was involved in this, the local contractor did the flatwork for us as a donation. The local mason, uh, put up the C and U walls as a donation. Um, a, a guy who didn't need a, a tenth-foot astronomy dome anymore donated to the city. Um, and we were able to, to build, uh, something that, uh, is, is lasting. Um, and, and in point of fact, that's maybe one of the few regrets I have moving back down here is that, um, I can't just go over there anymore like I usually can. And, uh, so, uh, as I was telling Bruce this afternoon in the group, maybe that's something we can do here. Um, we just need to find a good site, and we need to have community support. Uh, and maybe, uh, this can be something that we can, that we can have for kids of all ages, uh, in, uh, southeastern Arizona, so. Um, Bruce, I, you know, uh, you and your very large crew of volunteers, um, are to be committed not just for reaching the finish line, but doing all the heavy lifting to get us to the finish lines. And, uh, uh, so this is something I hope is a new chapter in, in the quality of life that, uh, that we enjoy, uh, in this area, and we'll continue, uh, to build upon in the future, so. Thank you very much, and for that, I applaud you.
Thank you, and for anyone interested, really, there's a very, you've got a very informative, uh, website, bisbiedarkskies.com. Cal, right? Yeah, that's my thought. All right. Um, so please go there and find out more about lots of information and what it's all about, and, uh, and how you can help contribute towards, uh, us getting even better at this. Thank you all. All right, we move on now to item seven. This is discussion of possible approval of a grant application submission for Camp Nakco. Uh, Mike Norman, there it is.
Mayor and, uh, council. Um, so this item is, uh, we request for approval to move forward with the grant application to the National Park Service for a saving American treasures grant. Um, we've been working on putting the grant application together. We've been earning some letters of support from different agencies, including the State Store Preservation Office. And, uh, our goal is to, uh, apply for a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant that will be put towards the, uh, preservation of the, uh, historic buildings there. Uh, a couple of the, uh, requirements as part of that grant, if it's awarded, uh, requires a, uh, one-to-one matching funds, which you would use the, uh, two grants that we have right now, the state grant and the Mellon Foundation grant, which gives us more than enough money to match the, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand dollar National Park Grant. And the other requirement is that if awarded, we would need to put, um, uh, a conservation easement of the property for a period of, uh, twenty years. And that just, uh, ensures that, um, the grant investment would be protected, uh, as an installed property for a period of this one. So those are, are the two conditions. Um, we feel we have a pretty good, uh, chance of, um, being successful at giving the, uh, grant funds. And, uh, the, the application is due December twelfth, so we're, so we're working on getting that together. I think we're pretty close to having all the issues put together and ready to submit, uh, by the twelfth. You had an answer in question. Oh, also, by the way, I forgot to mention Martin Hangan, uh, the Knack River Alliance Board Chair is with us on Zoom, and, uh, she is here, uh, she's up in Williams, um, so, uh, she's here on Zoom to, uh, respond to any questions as well.
Uh, the only thing I saw is it also requires not only the conservation easement, but also you're committed to twenty years of maintenance. So, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so, not that this is going anywhere, but we want to make sure there's that it will be maintained for that many years soon, so.
Correct.
We set money aside, you're the nonprofit, so that that will be a continuing, ongoing situation.
Yes, that will be one of the goals of the Knack River Alliance, assuming our responsibility for the operation of, of the site is to make sure that we have, uh, registry and funds available to maintain, uh, buildings after their registration.
Want to bring up? Any more questions or comments?
Yes, uh, I don't know, maybe you guys have already discussed with Joe, is this okay with the, with the other grant, burners, the Mellon Foundation to use their funds to get, is this legal? I mean, is there?
Yes, it is.
Okay. There's no legal issues?
No, no, I, 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 I mean, Joe responded that better, but from my knowledge, working with brands.
Using a grant to get another grant. Not, no issues.
That's all from the same father. Okay. Just to make sure.
From, from my experience, working with federal grants, when I was at ADOT, um, you weren't able to use another federal grant to manage another, another federal grant, but if you had, like, Mellon Foundation is a
Private.
A private, or you can't use those funds in any of the federal.
Okay.
All right. I entertain a motion. No, no other comments?
I move to approve the Camp Nakco Project team in Nakco here in July to apply for the National Park Service saving American treasures grant.
Aye, sir.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the grant application submission for Camp Nakco. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close name. Very none, the eyes have it, if you like.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, this will be item eight. This is a discussion of possible approval of an agreement with Cochise County for the sale of wastewater effluent for the Bisbee effluent recharge project. Dick Manager, it's time.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for leaving once again. Um, this is uh a, the proposed contract uh to replace uh the agreement that we had uh that from twenty nineteen until just recently. Um and uh the, the previous contract set forth uh terms basically for a successor agreement, which is what has been brought in tonight. Um, we, we did um have quite a bit of discussion about um the, how, how the successor agreement will work because um for one thing, what we're hoping is that we'll actually sell water this time, okay? We had, we had hoped to sell water in the first five years, but uh as you know, these things can take sometimes an awful long time uh to put together. And so um I just wanted to highlight uh from the agreement and both, by the way, uh we have visitors from the county who are also here uh to answer questions if you need to. Joe Casey. Uh, and Joe, I'm not sure what your title is this week.
Associate County District.
You don't want to be in elections anymore. Uh, Martin Gavell uh from engineering and Holly Richter, who is a consultant to anything to do with water uh from her firm, Precedent Rivers. So, okay, um, so the, the last uh five-year agreement that we had with the county for the same purpose uh called for us to sell water to the county at the price of sixty dollars per acre foot. Um, and, and then once we reached the two hundred, two hundred acre foot mark, uh the price of per acre foot would go up to ninety dollars per acre foot. Uh, in this agreement, uh we have agreed in principle to uh sell water to the county for the price of two hundred and fifty dollars per acre foot. And, and the, this price was arrived at uh by calling every water company, every water district and spending cities as we could get to answer the phone. Uh, and uh, and we found a handful that actually not everybody sells uh reclaimed water. Um, but the ones who did, uh we had a variety of prices, but the average amount was right at two hundred and fifty dollars an acre foot. So we thought that uh that was a fair price per acre foot. And then, of course, uh in, under the terms of the agreement, that's for a minimum of two hundred acre feet per year, okay? Um, historically, in the last couple of, of recent years, our output has been um a sposh over three hundred acre feet per year uh at a discharge point. Um, and in fact, we're in the process right now to purchase the new uh meter uh to replace the original gear at the discharge point uh because we've had some trouble in more recent years calibrated that meter so that we know exactly what we're discharging. Um, so uh the meter has been purchased, the meter, it, it's not here yet, no, it will be here soon. Um, and then uh that was pre-installed in line uh so we can get more accurate information. Um, the uh, uh your original agreement was a five-year agreement. This agreement is a twenty-five year agreement and uh and, and then the agreement calls for the city and county to review the market price of reclaimed water every five years uh to adjust the rate uh uh for the county to pay the city. And then uh the twenty-five year agreement can terminate it earlier if necessary uh by mutual agreement. So along with the two fifty an acre foot, um there will be an initial payment from the county, an amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that, um, that money will be uh set aside uh for administrative needs uh in the initial phases uh and, and maintenance costs that may arise uh before uh payments for water start coming themselves. Um, essentially, um we're at a point right now where we're, there's a lot of things going on with the Bisbee um effluent project. We're still out um a, a couple, a couple, maybe three years uh before we can actually see construction underway. Um, and of course, as, as uh you saw in, in the agreement, um the, the hundred fifty thousand dollar payment uh to the city will um happen when the county, the law is contract for construction pipeline. So I'd like to say that, that you're still a good year, other years way up. So, anyway, um that's it in a nutshell. Um, Mark or Holly, is there anything or Joe, is there anything else? I forgot.
I think you may always speak.
So, no, entertain any questions for that.
Yep. Just let me say, because I'm also on a, on a recharge networks system, that it's been a long time coming. Um Mark can testify about how hard it was to get a, get a right-of-way along the border. Found out it was actually BLM property and not necessarily all the border patrol and and after many meetings, we uh, they achieved that. Um, still working on a recharge basin. This water does not go directly into the river. It goes into a recharge basin that's next to it, so it will be filtered by the ground and, and let it percolate into the river as necessary. So uh there's not a, a direct uh discharge. Um, I mean, it's directly discharged now and the river is gone. It just sits there and, and does its thing. Most of it evaporates unfortunately. So, um, outside of that, um, it is a way that it is the driest part of the river. Um, it is the area that needs the most help. And uh because most of the water is used by Mexico before it gets to us. And uh except maybe in the super rainy season, but uh this will uh be one of the many projects that's happening along the river uh for the entire sprinkling in order to, to help the birds and the, and the and all the animals that uh that need that to live and, and, and the trees that survive on it. So. All right, I'll open to questions.
I have one. So uh from what I read here, the county should pay the city a hundred fifty thousand upon the county's award of the contract for construction. So the construction is going, is going to go through the county or through the city? Because they're going to give you the money. They're going to do the construction and you pay for that, okay?
Um, it's, it's, right now, it's our understanding. The county will contract for construction by one.
Okay, but yeah. So basically, what, what the county, let me understand this. They're setting this as the budgeted amount? Hundred and fifty thousand for construction plus other expenses?
Well, that's the payment to the city. That, that will not pay for construction. Construction could be close to twenty nine.
Yes, so by that, a hundred and fifty thousand? So, okay.
That goes to the city for some to cover some of the city's infrastructure costs that are going to be needed for improvements at our plant and, and on our side.
Because it says here, the contract for construction of pipeline and overcharged facility. So this is a part, part, the hundred fifty thousand is part of?
The hundred and fifty is meant to go into what we're going to need to do to improve our facility.
Oh, okay.
So it's going to go, it's going to go into the project. It's going to go in on our side. And so the way that this works is the county's going to build and construct it. And then the city's going to maintain the, the pipeline up to the discharge area because the county doesn't do wastewater maintenance.
Okay, so this would be just a part, part of the city?
So once it's all completed, then the city's going to maintain it.
Okay.
And part of the funds that we, we get from the effluent, the two hundred and fifty dollars per acre foot will go towards the, the maintenance.
Okay, okay. On the question.
And uh, and one thing, as I forgot to mention, is that we are going to, we're going to establish a separate fund.
Okay.
Okay, so.
That makes sense now.
Any, any revenue that comes from the sale of water or any other uh revenue that might take place will go into a new fund yet to be established. Uh, and that, that way, uh we can um transparently um uh operate our, part of the pipeline without commingling the funds with other of, of our collections.
Okay, so, so, so that's coming down.
It's gonna be, okay, okay. Pretty much like we did with the money that we got from the fire.
Okay.
We put it in a separate place so that it was separate distinct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And, and the goal is also to work with other agencies in the future to establish a maintenance endowment to cover those costs as well. But that's not detailed in here because that's not part of the suit, not really. But that is identified in here as a goal moving forward.
It, it really came down to, you know, sixty dollars naked foot. And if we were going to maintain it, that wasn't going to be another thing. So the two hundred and fifty uh would be a much more reasonable uh amount and then we would be on them. It's our contribution to the river to get paid for our, for our wastewater, which we get nothing for now, but then also uh help maintain the system so that it will, it will benefit uh all of us and, and the nature of it.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, um, I, I know uh geographically, it's not easily understood and I know uh there have been some, not, not in this room, but there have been some other folks uh who uh don't quite understand that that's our basin, okay? We pump water out for the people of Bisbee from the well field in Nakco. That's in the same basin as the river. So we're taking that water out of the basin for our use and, and the, and the reclaimed water is returned to the base.
I don't want to get in front of it all, but we're also in negotiations with Arizona Water. That's why they came up with the two hundred fifty dollars per acre foot. If there's more left over from what we're going to sell the river, um they're looking to put in a recharge basin at, or close to one of the wellheads. So that we also recharge where we're closer to where we're actually drawing from. So that way we get full use out of, out of our wastewater and not just let it go away. So that's, that's why there's such some negotiations because we wanted to make sure we were fair at both parts.
So we're just in the process of establishing where we would be going. So this is the first.
Yeah, the other contract expired, so it was time to redo it.
Yeah, yeah, we had to do it anyway. So we just, this thought of better than updated. Okay, well, that one was a, a contract to enter into this contract. So it was that this is the, the main contract for the overall project.
Man, somebody actually came in to start this here. So engineering's going on now.
Yes.
So it's slowly working through the process. Any other longer comments or questions? Then I'll make the motion to uh uh approve, I move to approve the agreement with Cochise County for the sale of wastewater effluent for the Bisbee effluent recharge project.
Oh, sorry for that.
We have a motion to second to approve item number eight to agreement with Cochise County for the sale of our wastewater effluent. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Skinner. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suede.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes six one. So, all right. We'll move on to item number nine. Item nine is discussion of possible approval of contract amended with Westland Resources. Uh, Arizona Corporation doing business as western engineering environment, environmental. I don't know why that was there. Anyway, go ahead, Melissa.
Good, good, Mayor and Council. I am back before you. I was here um last meeting to talk about the award we got from SHPO to continue phase two of the uh Warren Historic District. Today, what I've brought to you is the amendment to the contract with Jennifer uh Lustick, who has been performing for us all along, uh the reevaluations and the recalculations. Um, this um amount of twenty thousand and, including, you know, our in-kind. Um, it, it, now that phase one is completed and all the neighborhood photos and documentations have completed, parcels have been counted, um and we know what will be submitted. So she has the work in front of her and her team, um which I know they're almost done actually assembling all this information and preparing the nomination. Um, this will then go to SHPO and they will do a review in March, which we will attend. And then at that point, SHPO will move it on to the keeper. So um, the other thing that, that they will do is as the keeper reviews this, and that can take up to a year, I think I've talked to you about that before. If there are negotiations or changes that need to be made, she will help us do those also. So everyone is committed to seeing this to fruition. So I, I ask that you approve the twenty thousand for, to amend her contract for the phase two of this.
Hey, questions?
Thanks. Just by clarification, uh can you just explain since you're making this, when you say amending, the amount from what to what? I mean, yeah, I am, I miss something.
We had an existing contract with her for phase one.
Okay.
And we had a dollar amount for phase one.
Okay.
Through permission from our attorneys, we only needed to amend it because we were, and we, we changed just a few of the things for the completion of phase two. So we're amending the existing contract to include the phase two.
Oh, okay. It's six hundred and fourteen forms, a hundred and sixty-seven new, a hundred, yeah, sixty-seven new. New, new, new homes were assessed.
Well, and remember that because of the time lapse, the year changes from when you had to count.
Oh.
And then one of the hiccups, if I may real quickly, in the, the last application was they indicated over eight hundred vacant parcels and we didn't find that. So we didn't find that. And, and as you know, we had very dedicated volunteers and we were out and about. So we feel very, very good about this application being completely updated.
And Mr. Mayor, uh, I might add that because of the lapse in time uh from the earlier application until we picked this up again a couple of years ago, um we, we essentially squandered uh a lot of time and effort that was put in back in uh twenty thirteen, twenty twelve in that era. Uh, because um when it came back with questions to answer from the keeper, um rather, rather than answer the questions and return the form or return the application to the keeper, um someone, I wasn't here, so I don't know who, that someone opted uh to put it on the shelf. And so when I, when I came back to work in twenty one, people from Warren were starting to uh ask when we were going to pick it back up again. Uh, my initial conversations with SHPO uh uh indicated that because of all the time that had elapsed uh since we did that last application, that we were pretty much going to start over from scratch. However, um I think that was probably a blessing uh of sorts because I feel much more confident about uh the way this one was done compared to the way it was done back in twenty eleven, twenty twelve. So um, so I'm, I'm real happy with it. I'm very happy with the consultant and uh um, and, and she seems to have it all down to a science. And I think um, we may get a question back and forth from the keeper on a couple of things and that's to be expected. Uh, but I feel very confident that in, in early twenty twenty five, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be more optimistic.
Okay.
Um, I, I think it's going to be sooner rather than later, but uh we'll find a cross finish line on this one.
We're highly supported by SHPO. And the other reason for this amendment is that that consultant will do those negotiations with the keeper. Now, we're always involved in it, but she has committed to that. And I don't believe we had that, as Mr. Hawken said before.
When will the public be able to see what their home is on the list or not? And is it contributor or significant contributor?
Actually, they could, they can, they want to know.
They want to know, we can.
Yeah, we, I mean, that's, we've got that.
We've got it, yeah.
I didn't know if it was all put together yet.
Yes, yes, that was phase one. Yes, it is all put together.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind having that put on our website, just like the old Bisbee one is. I'm understanding it is a draft at this point. It hasn't been accepted.
Speak with Jennifer and make sure we get the right documents and we'll post them absolutely.
That'd be a good idea, ma'am.
Yeah.
Because that way we'll see, yeah, we can get excited about, you know, your house and what's, what, you know. At least coming home is we don't.
Yeah, absolutely, can do.
My only disappointment is that one eighteen Arizona Street, well, not really contributing.
Yeah, no, we're not.
It's all right. It's contributing to the neighborhood.
That's good. It'll be great. And they already love it.
Yes, they, you see people sitting out there watching. Yes, they do. You see people sitting out there watching them go. Yeah, and neighbors are sitting there and they're doing.
Come on by, we've got a bench for you to sit.
Well, we found more too, wants to make this house.
Okay, go ahead.
Any more questions?
I don't have a question. I just, the the term, the keeper, it just reminds me of the gatekeeper from the ghost.
Actually, it would be, that would be a good job. Nobody knows who you are and working some obscure office, probably in the basement of the National Archives. And and you have all the power.
All right.
You wanna do it?
Okay, sure.
I move that we accept this contract amendment for phase two of the Warren the City Beautiful Historic District survey in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Nice second.
We have a motion to second for item nine to accept the amended co- um contract for twenty thousand dollars. All those favors, say why by saying aye. There are none, the ayes have it, so moved. All right, uh one more item on the main agenda, I'll just do, but item ten is discussion on possible approval of the C D B G contract with Seagull for the completion of owner occupied renovations in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for seven more homes that have qualified for this program.
Thank you. I'm very happy to bring this to you. We have completed all of the work in qualifications for the last seven homes in the Saginaw area that will be repaired. We have opened up a a bid for the contractor. Um that contractor will be step up Bisbee Naco. This is the contract that we do between Seagull and us that allows us to move forward. Um and right now we have seven ready to go. Um if any of those don't quite meet the fifteen thousand, we'll do like we did before. So we were a- able to do two extras last time, so we'll be completing a total of seventeen homes in Saginaw with the owner occupied home repairs. Lord, I do that.
Just so already, it's not fifteen thousand for all seven, it's fifteen thousand.
The total amount of the contract is a hundred and five thousand.
So.
Yeah, it says per home.
Yeah.
Just quickly to go over our priorities, our priorities for roofs, windows, and to take anybody off um antiquated gas lines that we could and we're gonna be accomplishing that. Um just as an additional benefit to this, we work with Richard and APS. And so every, every family that does this also, we work with them on an application to reduce their electric bill because they've already qualified. So we've kind of woven a couple of things in with this. And step ups is great.
All right, any more questions?
I have uh just clarifications for everyone. So when you decide on a home, how do you decide? Uh does the owner or the resident tells you what do you want done? Or you go in and say well, you believe the roof versus the heating? I mean, I mean, how do you?
Well, we have, we have, that's a really great question because we have an entire procedure that includes an inspection.
Okay.
So we, it it all work has to be based on, on, you know, uh a pull of an application. So the homeowner does say, well, this and this and this is bad. We go in and talk about that we have this fifteen thousand dollars, that we have these priorities. Remember, the homeowner comes to us for qualifications. We don't choose them. And sometimes we're able to do a little bit extra with the fifteen thousand, but I can tell you the common denominator is the three priorities that we work on. Now, once or twice I've had homeowners say, oh, electricity is too, too expensive. I'm not sure I want that. Um but uh and and they can do that, you know, we can spend the money elsewhere. But I, I'm here to tell you after doing using the mini splits with the Affordable Housing Program and in these that a very unscientific comparison is about forty percent difference than what your electric bill had been previously used in the mini splits. So, so everything um is done per inspection or city inspection.
Okay, good.
I just got a comment. I just wanna thank you for everything you're doing for these homeowners. Um such a, you're making such a big difference. Um and Saginaw is looking great.
I know.
It really is. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say the same, thank you.
Well, it's Mr. Mayor, but while we're having this love fest, Melissa, she deserves every bit of it. She's a part of an excellent team of of people that are working together on this, including the residents themselves. Um you know, as as she mentioned, first you gotta want it, uh and then you gotta qualify. And and then we have to agree on what we're gonna do.
Um and so then a whole lot of people.
And and that includes personnel from Step Up.
Yeah.
Uh that includes personnel from uh our staff and public works.
Specters.
We've enlisted uh Joe Warren out of retirement so that we don't burden uh the other building inspectors with too many inspections in one day. Joe has been pretty much handling all of the inspections for these homes and has uh been doing an excellent job, got getting, getting through it very quickly and getting from the point of the call to go do the inspection to getting uh qualified. So um I I think what we got here um and I think, and I think in all of you really, uh what you've done over the last five years is you've allowed staff to make a difference for uh homeowners in Bisbee for so many reasons um that uh the only, and I mean, it's come to everybody's attention, including this, the governor and and the governor's staff, uh we're, we're just hoping that uh at some point they may bless us with a little bit of cash uh to go along with it. That, that has been a little uh bit difficult so far. Um and uh and you know, and you know part of the reason that uh Mike Norman is here tonight uh is not for this, but uh we got acquainted with Mike because he was volunteering uh at Step Up Bisbee Naco and uh he had finished a couple of workforce houses uh for the team and and of course that we noticed it. And so if Mike applied for this job, um it made it a lot easier to make a decision. So uh so we're, uh I I think, you know, I've I've got the easy part, I'm just give the go, go, go signal when they, when they ask you for something. So, so, but at the same time, I think the whole community um should be really proud because of, if you look at the workforce housing program, you look at this program um and and hopefully you'll be looking soon at selling the Hope Crest uh building after it gets cleaned up. Um how many communities are our size capable of that? Think about it. This is, this is, everybody's asking us how, how to do it. So anyway, just thought I'd wanna throw that out there. So, and anyway, yeah, she's uh she's the keystone. So um that's what gets it done.
Not even a closet behavior to work. All right. And any other comments, questions? One last question?
I move to approve the agreement with Seagull to complete the C the the G homeowner occupied rehab program for seven qualified homes in the Saginaw area designated colonias in the amount of one hundred and five thousand dollars.
Second?
We have a motion to second for item ten to approve uh the contract with Seagull, the completion of the uh rehab of the house. All those favors, say why by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose name. There are none, the ayes have it, so moved. Thank you, ten, thank you. And finally, city manager report.
I just have one item today, Mr. Mayor of, I saved it for the city managers report because it technically wasn't on agenda uh for tonight, but um uh back in August, uh we were presented with an opportunity uh to um apply for a couple of grants through uh WIFA uh which, by the way, typically lends money, they don't usually grant money. Um but uh in fact, while we were at the uh leading cities conference, I got a call from uh our grant writer uh from Local First. And since he happens to live in the valley, we actually met there that same day and went over a variety of of water and wastewater related projects because that's what WIFA funds. And um after a couple of conversations and then bringing in uh other staff after the conference um and and other grant writers, um we thought that our best opportunity to get uh with the funding in this round uh was to um apply for a grant for the actual pipeline uh for the recharge project. So uh we applied for two, actually two two million dollar grants. One will pay basically for the, a section of the pipeline, the other will pay um for the pumping system that will, uh even, even though it's downhill to the river from here, uh we can't get from here to there without a little bit of assistance from the public. And so uh we put together two applications for that purpose. Um and uh and of course, uh the same personnel that was here tonight from the county also also assisted in putting together that grant application. Uh I received uh two email messages last Friday uh Friday afternoon from WIFA indicating that uh they are going to fund both of those projects for the full amount that we requested. Um now, that still has to go to the WIFA board. Um and and of course, they're gonna, they're gonna make me sweat a little bit because they can't get a sign on the WIFA board agenda until March. Um but uh it's pretty rare when a staff recommendation from their staff uh doesn't get funded by WIFA. So uh this is a big break. Uh Joe mentioned to you a little earlier tonight. The total cost of the recharge projects gonna be twelve, maybe fifteen million dollars. Well, no one was actually expecting the city of Bisbee to raise money for the construction. The opportunity presented itself. We took advantage of the opportunity and it appears that we have succeeded. Um but not only does that signal uh and a greater contribution by the city of Bisbee, but it also makes getting other funding easier because now other funding agencies that the county will grant to and and Holly will be going to see that we've already succeeded in partially funding the capital improvement project. So um this is a a big one. And if you're keeping score, uh the last two fiscal years, uh the amount of grants we have obtained has gone from uh twenty-two point eight seven million to point six four eight seven million. So um we're, we're, we're getting our share of what's out there and uh and the mayor was momentarily concerned about blowbacks. This is state money, so um even if the administration claws back federal money, this one won't get applied back. So this is, this will be good.
Being state money could also be used as a match for federal money.
That's, that's also correct. One of the big funders of this project is of course expected to be the department. That's because a rebuilding river is very important to maintaining uh world issue. That's all I have.
Hey, well, for one last time.